I'd like to open the planning board meeting for November fourteenth. It is six oh six P M. Under Mass General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty F. This meeting is being video recorded as well as broadcast live. First up is administrative items, and we are going to go over the two thousand and twenty-four meeting calendar. Can't believe it's that time. So, Michael?
I don't have much to say about it. It's the meeting calendar for next year. If there are any dates that we all would like to remove from the calendar, now would be the time to do that, just so we can not have to cancel those meetings out of our other dates.
The yellow are?
The yellows are meeting dates.
Okay, and the red is holidays?
It indicates some town elections.
Town elections, okay. And town meeting, okay. Okay, Michael, Mark will not be here. So, I think we don't need to do anything but take it under advisement. Next up would be an approval not required or A and R. File number twenty-three dash oh three eight A. I don't know what AP eighty-seven means, but for lot forty-eight B and forty-eight C, approval not required, plan of land, Westport, Mass., request by the applicant for endorsement of a two-lot plan of land located at four sixteen River Road in zero Puddingstone Lane. Assessors map eighty-seven lots forty-eight B and forty-eight C, prepared for Richard Beers.
Good evening. Sean Leach, Northeast Engineers, representing Richard Beers. This is a, basically a land swap between two lots, both of which are non-conforming. One is non-conforming by area, one is non-conforming for frontage. But what happened here is there was an septic system installed this lot. During the survey, we found that the bent and some infertinances were over the line. We also found that this particular house, which is Ray Palm's old house, didn't meet zone. It was nine feet from the property line, and basically they were using their yard here as basically their own. This lot has been unoccupied, unused for, I don't know, since it was created essentially. So what we're doing is just equal swapping two areas to make this conform to zoning, put all the septic system and everything on this lot for this house, and basically the swap here just makes this actually lot a little better, it makes it a little wider. Everything else meets conformance, I mean, the non-conformity doesn't increase, so everything remains the same as harsh frontage and area for both lots.
And the shed on there?
The shed, this one?
Yep.
Yeah.
So...
That shed's on the other lot.
Okay, and this lot was created originally?
Well, this lot was created in the seventies. Well, this was created later, Puddingstone Lane was created a little bit later. This is fifty lot. Originally, this is the original lot line. We're now creating this lot line to make everything conform.
Right.
But we're not changing the area. It's an equal swap area, so nothing changes area-wise. This has plenty of frontage, obviously, on Puddingstone Lane. This only has a hundred's front on River Road.
And the owners are?
Richard Beers and he owns actually both lots.
Okay.
But they're two different entities.
The planners?
Sean said the lots are not having any changes in frontage, access, or lot area, and so I would recommend that the planning board endorses this plan.
Want a motion, Mr. Chair?
Yes, unless there's all their comments. Okay.
I move to approve the endorsement of the plan entitled AP eighty-seven lot forty-eight B and forty-eight C, approval not required, plan of land in Westport, Mass., because the plan complies with the provisions of Mass. General Law's Chapter forty-one, Section eighty-one P.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, well, it's not time yet, so... Why don't we go over part of the planner's report?
Yeah, so next up is the request to release a lot, Lot ten, and the one hundred thousand dollar surety from the Stacy Lane subdivision. S W Cole went out and did an assessment of the site and assessed its conformity to the conditions of approval. Just a quick summary of that report. S W Cole reported that the roadway is only to binder grade. Also called it zenith engineering this morning and confirmed that there's no asbel available, and the bounds, the roadway bounds have not yet been set. The stone basins require regrading. The roadway shoulder shaping is outstanding, and grass growth and landscaping are still outstanding. The S W Cole report recommends that the planning board deny the request to release Lot ten and the surety, as do I recommend that the request is denied. There's still a lot of outstanding work to be completed.
Okay, I don't see, I guess I need to look at the other.
Are you looking for that report?
No, I'm looking for the... I don't see where this is listed next in the... It's not in there.
It's not on the agenda?
No.
Oh, it's not in the pack.
Okay.
So where do we find this?
I have the report up here. I don't know if it made it into the binders or not. The report just came in yesterday.
Right. Yeah, well, there's a piece of paper here. There's two letter comments about... No, no. I'm sorry. So I have number one as administrative items, approval not required. Number two is the public hearing for Corey Ridge. And number three? And number three is Mellow's Way. And number four is planner support, and I know that we've talked about Stacy Lane, but I don't see it in the agenda.
Four thirty-one Fisher Road, that's the official name. It's not in the iPad.
Oh, I see. It didn't make it to the printed copy, I'm sorry. All right. So four thirty-one Fisher Road, Stacy Lane subdivision. So is there anybody here for that? So the report from the planner is that we should not release the lot and not reduce the surety?
That's correct, and the, that comes from, why, we're relying on the S W Cole report because Derek Mello went out and did that inspection. His recommendation is that the planning board should not release the surety or the remaining lot until there's been more progress made on the items that I had listed before.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I would move that we follow the planner's recommendation regarding the Stacy Lane subdivision.
I would second that. Yeah, I would too. I drove through there today, and it does... It looks like it has the makings of a decent subdivision, but it is not anywhere near done, so... And I don't think that we want to release anything, so... All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next up is the six fifteen public hearing for Corey Ridge Estates. File number twenty-three dash oh three five C, request by the applicant to consider a definitive subdivision plan entitled "The Definitive Subdivision Corey Ridge Estates", located at two sixty-five Cornell Road, AP eighty-one lot four, proposing to divide the property into four lots.
John Connell, Northeast Engineers, here on behalf of Brian Giblin, East of York, two sixty-five Cornell. What you have up on the board now is the title sheet. It shows the existing home, oh, Cornell, yeah. And then the three additional lots. So it's four lots, one being, four-lot subdivision, one being the existing home, and three additional lots to the rear of that. If you could go to another, the...
Yeah, which page would you like me to?
You can go through the existing conditions, so all three cheap, that's the current perimeter of the property. You can see Cornell Road, the existing house. You can see this little bump out, it's a cemetery, the existing cemetery, the Corey family cemetery, it's titled. You can see the topography, there's a ridge running through the property in this general area here. So maybe, if I had to guess, a third to less than half of that water will come in a easterly direction, and then the remainder goes off to a larger wetland area at the rear of the west of the side of the property. You can go to the site. This is the subdivision plan. You can see the lot, Lot one division ends roughly adjacent to the cemetery. This is the proposed way of Thomas Corey Lane. Lot two, Lot three, Lot four. Bring up the site, the grading plan. This is the grading plan here. The, we're proposing an existing roadway off Cornell, sixteen feet wide. We come in with a proposed apron sloping away from Cornell, so we don't add any water to the road, capture all of that water. It's a small intention, basically, to catch whatever's coming down off this ridge and this slope to pass that onto the road and let that run off, continue to go in that easterly direction that it is currently going in. The road in this profile on the next sheet, I can show you, is a high point here. That water comes down, this water comes down to that low point. This is a detention, a small detention basin here to catch this water here before it gets to the road. And then the largest detention basin is on the fourth lot, and that catches whatever comes off of this ridge and this piece of the, piece of the roadway here. Some of the road, it's a sixteen-foot wide gravel with crushed stone on top. Some of that road does go unattenuated easterly, and that will show up on the watershed plans if you wanted to go through those two. That's the profile. You can see the profile of the road. Details, you don't necessarily have to see the watershed plan, but if you wanted to look at that, you can see where the water's going. This is the existing watershed. This is the area that we have to capture in. Yeah, if you go to the proposed, you'll see how that gets digged up. This area, from the center line of the road, gets captured in that small basin there. Then to the center line of the road, this gets captured in the second basin, and then the larger basins gets captured. Everything to the east of that would go unattenuated to the, to the property line. The, we reduce the rates, peak rate in the two-ten, a hundred, two-ten, twenty-five, a hundred. Anywhere from twenty-seven percent... Twenty-seven percent in the twenty-five, twenty-eight, the ten, thirty-one, and the two, and then thirty percent in the hundred. We've received the departmental comments and also the peer review. Be certainly happy to go through that, those comments, will you? If you want me to do that now, or if you had any questions in the interim, be happy to try to answer those.
So with these three extra lots, where are the house locations going to be? It's dropping off pretty steeply to the back, right?
It's, those really haven't been determined yet, and that was one of the comments also from the Board of Health about the perks. We've done three test pits up the front here to determine groundwater elevations for the detention basins and to get a feel for the soil, C-type soils, as to whether they perk. The houses, from my knowledge and speaking with the owner, are clearly going to be on the flatter part of the lot. They're not going to encroach on that slope at all. Everything's going to be up, you know, here and here, you know, but that hasn't, it hasn't been hidden down completely, nor have the locations where they would do the perks for those owners.
Okay. Why don't you continue?
Go through the comments.
Yeah.
Yeah, we received, I'll go through the departmental comments. The building department had no comment. The selectmen had no comment. The conservation commission recommended approval with modifications, and that had to do with locating wetlands. Right, Bobby, just go back to the set plan, sorry. The, there's a wetland here, and we've since located that wetland and shown that on a revised set of drawings. We'll get all the revisions, both from the department and hopefully to address all your concerns and show that on the final set. But there is a wetland in the back here, there's a low point there, and so that's been picked up, and that will be reflected on the new set of plans, or the revised set of plans, certainly before we go to conservation as well. Disability commission had no comment. Board of Health recommended disapproval, said no record of any perks being done, which is true. We haven't done any official perks out there. Again, I mentioned the three along the property line for the stormwater, and then once we locate those houses, and there was one done at the back, that was also to check the soils. Once we locate those houses, we'll do the perks. That way, the house and the septic system will fit on the lot directly there, and we can go by gravity. S W Cole's comments, first one was assessors map. He mentioned a thirty-foot access utility element runner on, along the property line, but that isn't, it's not on our property. That's on the adjacent property, but we can make a note of that on the revised plans. Number two was the turnaround, alternative turnaround, the hammerhead. We have one leg that's forty, the other leg that's fifty. That, that I think would be sufficient to accommodate anything that went down that street, but we, I can shift the road a little bit at the end there and get fifty on each side, if that's the, if that's what the board would like to see. I can certainly get that fifty feet on each side. Comment number three, insufficient information is provided on this plan to show how the drainage collection system is to be constructed and tied into the drainage basins. I requested a, sent, just a request, just to, if you could clarify that comment, just to see exactly what he was looking to see additionally on there. Because it's a very simple drainage system. It's just pipes, flat ends, and swales. Everything's just grating, and it goes right to those basins. There are not really, not much in the line of structure, so I'm not sure what detail he was looking for on there to show how they would be collected, but certainly happy to show any additional information he wants on that. Also on that, contours do not match cross-section. I couldn't see where they didn't, but there's another instance where maybe I can touch base with S W Cole and just get some clarification on that. Number four, this was a note, I asked, asked for clarification on this one as well. The note in the detention basin detail on sheet six says downstream to wetland. Wetland's two hundred and twenty feet away. I think this is kind of crossed wires here, where it's a standard. Do you go to the details, please?
This one or other one?
The detail, the details, yeah, it was appropriate. This says downstream to wetland, so he looked at that, and it's a standard, it's our standard detail. Eventually, the water reaches the wetland somewhere, so we, it's just a standard detail, but I think he's taken that and said, well, the wetland is too possible, or how are you going to get, you're saying the water's getting there, how are you going to ensure the water gets there? And you'd have to provide eastern, so that was never our intent. I mean, we're just discharging on our own property, and the water's going where it's historically gone, so we certainly wouldn't try to get an easement for someone's property and tell them it has to get there. I mean, they, they will accommodate the water that has always gone there the way they've always done it, so certainly not trying to tell them how to deal with the water that comes off our property as water also comes on our property. No information on, this is comment five, no information on test pits one, two, three. We didn't have any details. It's a C-type soil, that's really what we were looking to see, to make sure it would perk and then to look for the estimated groundwater table, so we wouldn't put the basins in groundwater. That's something he definitely wants, you know, we can certainly do some test pits and provide a log, or logs. Comment number six, gravel roadway cross-section does not go with a typical bituminous pavement section. I'm going to have to look and modify that typical pavement section. It is a little bit different from the bottom of the pavement below, as opposed to what we're proposing for the, the gravel section, cross-section, so I, I believe that's what he's looking for, is just the revised detail when I make, I will make that revision. Pot B of that, number six, is gravelled, having a travelway width of twenty feet. Note, the applicant only proposes to use a sixteen-foot wide travelway, which is one of our, our wave is to go from twenty to sixteen. C, no details are provided for the inlet control structures at each, and outlet structures for the detention basins. We don't really have outlet structures on these basins. These are just flat ends, but I suspect he just wants a detail of how those flat ends are constructed, probably like a riprap apron, so we can add details to that effect. No detail provided for, well, there is no detail provided for riprap aprons at the outlet and inlet structures at the spillway, so those are probably almost like a combined comment to show the flat end and then also the apron that it would still run to. Number seven, stone water, this is a stone water runoff about the ridge, was exactly what you were mentioning about everything that goes to the west. Would you go back to the previous? Yeah, that's good. As we had the houses up here, the plan is to have all gravel drives, crushed stone drives thrown up for the houses, and then once those houses, we know what we're going to do with the houses, then we do the perks for the septic, and then his recommendation, which I agree with, is, and that was our plan, was to do the stone water, the chambers, to try to get that water, the roof water, into the ground, per the Board of Health regulations. Number eight was, the stone water's runoff analysis. A detailed post-construction maintenance drainage for the drainage system and road. Understandable to the new owner owners will be provided as part of this submission. The board may consider requiring a bond in the event the owners fail to maintain, maintain, now is forced to maintain the system for them. Yeah, we will provide a good detailed O and M plan. I'll provide that along with the plan revisions in language, hopefully it's pretty clear to the homeowners association as to their requirement, their commitment, and potential costs of maintaining all of this stuff. The bond, I've never, you know, I've never seen a bond on maintenance after the fact with the homeowners association. I could be insane, but I've never seen that. My hope is to confirm these comments with Cole prior to the revisions. That way, we do one set that addresses his concerns, and then whatever concerns the board may have.
Okay, a couple of small items. It shows on one of your plans that the stone wall around the cemetery has been removed.
Yeah, to my knowledge, that was done by the previous owner. I'm not really familiar with that, but that Mr. Giblin hadn't, he didn't do that. Is that, I don't know.
Yeah, when we did the survey, there's just base stones left there around...
Say again?
There's just the base stones left around the cemetery.
Yeah.
The wall itself had been removed on three sides, so there's, I mean, the stone was very evident in the cemetery, but we wanted to know that, so there wasn't, like, something that the current owner did. It was something that was done previously, and I'm not sure who did it.
Okay, and then the other question is, I see the stone walls going north to south, I guess, across two of the lots. Are you going to remove those, or are you going to save those?
I mean, I think it would be, I mean, I would like to see, as you know, I'm a stone wall guy, but I think they make a very nice feature just to cut a driveway through to go through a residence and everything. They make a real nice feature. I can speak for homeowners in the future, but if there's something we'd like, I would like to see preserved. That those are, these are fairly significant stone walls. They're fairly high. They're not field stone walls that you could bring up.
And then my last question before everybody else gets a chance is have you or the applicant or both of you considered flexible frontage with shared driveway as opposed to doing this? Because it's, what you're proposing is a pretty expensive roadway. And if you did a flexible frontage, you would have less lots, but you'd have less cost.
I think you would, but less cost, you still have the utility issue in there. And you still have the drainage issue that goes with it. Because you'd have to do a common drive, obviously with a flexible frontage, which essentially is what we're showing here for the roadway. It's like half dozen, one sixth of another type, type deal, you know? Is there, you know, a huge benefit for return? And I don't think there is. Because you still have to drive, you know, you still have to come in, ease them up a little bit there. You still have to come in here with a common drive. It'd be difficult to create a weird shaped lot around the house where it's existing. Right now, there's, you know, some nice walls and gardens and stuff and there's a garage and driveway here. Another nice wall coming across here. And basically you'd have to enable to do, you know, some kind of weird workshop shaped lot of hours.
So the lot, the lot now, as it exists as a whole, doesn't have adequate frontage on Cornell Road for the existing house, right?
Yes, it does.
Has a hundred and fifty feet?
Yes. So you're talking, you know, a hundred and seventeen, a hundred and fifty-three, a hundred and fifty-four feet frontage, give or take.
As it stands now.
Yeah, as it stands right now.
Once the road is got.
Oh, I see the extra five, five point six two feet.
It's a little pendulum over right here. This is part of a larger development plan, this actual lot itself, I mean, our lots.
This looks very familiar. Has this been before us before?
No, no.
Something similar?
You might have seen the entire division, because this is the, the lanes, lanes to the back, to Herb Hatfield, to the back, to the rear. And these lots were created kind of around that. I don't, this, I'm not aware of any subdivision plan for this particular lot. Do want further down the road, maybe.
Yeah, 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 that's probably, it's almost, it's very similar.
Similar to this, yes, yeah.
Others?
All right, well, this is a public hearing as well. I don't know if it's open to the public, but Mr. Conale, have you seen the staff recommendations? Do you have a problem with any of the staff recommendations?
Are you talking about the, the departmental comments or the planning?
Yeah, the planning department recommendations.
They haven't been sent over to hand me out, so I can go over those.
All right. Then I'll, I'll wait until Michael goes over the staff recommendations and get your comments turned up.
Okay, Michael?
Mr. Chair, the only comment I have is, is you've, you've asked for a wafer of the twenty-foot gravel surface. And you've gotta make a case for that because the fire department wants a twenty-foot wafer. The fire department wants the twenty-foot trampled surface.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Sean.
Well, okay, so basically this is an open field right now. There is a line of trees going along here. The sixteen-foot with the shoulder gets more than that width for a fire truck or a emergency vehicle to wait in and out there on this, so they haven't constructed twenty-foot. You don't gain, you won't gain anything by adding another four feet of gravel, another four feet of gravel. You could easily drive on the shoulder with grade and width the way it is and it wouldn't affect it. We would just, more like just for looks and aesthetics to keep it net and hour. And still allow that to attract. I mean, in some cases, when you go gravel road, you're, you're cutting it into a wood in the streets overhanging and everything. This is wide open, this is as open as it gets, so.
So is there, to follow up on that, is there a way that we can be helpful? My preference is, you know, the sixteen feet. But it's a fire department. So, so there's, there may be a conflict between two, two city departments on, on that. Is there a way we can be helpful or?
Yeah.
Have you completed your negotiations with the department?
Well, oddly enough, because we're in the transition phase, that's fire department, we're the current chief and everything like that, I have not spoken to the current chief on that. So I, I think, you know, the automatic thing in fire department, we want a C twenty. And not necessarily taking a look at the individual cases that, you know, as an, you know, like, can we get a fire truck and an ambulance pass? I'm pretty sure you can, you do it now, build the roadway there, if you drive on this particular. And, you know, and it's out of good sight distance and everything else. It's just sixteen would be preferable for, like I said, for aesthetic and just for, you know, keeping further away from property lines and things along that line. So I, I mean, it has to, we have to, it's what we're asking for that waiver. Probably, I wouldn't ask for it, I don't know, would it, would you have to?
Right, right.
It would be a problem.
Okay, Michael?
So start a couple of minor labeling issues. The north there, I was pointing in the wrong direction on page one, names of butters across Cornell Road need to be included on the plan sheets.
Excuse me, we're having a little trouble hearing Michael, I don't know, because of the lectern.
I'll speak up.
Thank you.
The width of Cornell Road needs to be included on the plan sheets. And then some more substantive issues. Lot four's northern boundary line is displayed inconsistently. On the title and drainage, the title and drainage and grading sheets, the boundary line is located slightly north of the existing stone wall. While on the existing conditions and definitive subdivision sheets, it's located right on the stone wall. So I can go with that.
The stone wall, the stone wall is definitely the property one. There's no doubt. And it might, that might be just a script there.
As you see, it's, it goes off the stone wall.
That's, yeah, that's a script issue.
And then the drainage and gradeage.
I guess that might be a script, that's a script issue.
I'll, I'll look at that.
Okay, yeah. Just so you all know, the, the perk tests are required prior to approval of a definitive plan. So we have to have that before the, the board can potentially approve this subdivision. Some of these have already been covered, let me skip over those. The drainage easement needs to maintain a width of seven and a half feet upon the approach to Cornell Road. And it gradually narrows to five feet. The applicant, if there are any stone walls to be removed, that should be indicated on the plan, as, as Jim noted. We've discussed.
Could I, could I add something to that, Michael?
Sure.
I, I think as our chairman mentioned, that as you look at that and as Sean mentioned, some of those may need to have cuts in them for driveways. But if you use the phrase no net loss, that is, if you're gonna remove some walls, they should reappear somewhere. And, you know, whether it's rebuilding walls that have been removed around the cemetery or something else, but if you're taking some walls downs because you have to for drives, you add them in other places where they make sense. You might think of that, or we might think of that. This is just my opinion, I'm just speaking for myself.
That is something the board could consider requiring as, as a condition of approval. The proposed road's turn radius on the Cornell Road is less than twenty-five feet, which is less than the, it's less than twenty-five feet, which is the town standard. Each curve on the plans, each curve on the plan needs to display the centerline radius. And just so you know, it's the, the required minimum is eighty feet. The road's crown, the slope of the, the road's crown exceeds three point one two five percent. And we've discussed some of the drainage issues. And we've addressed the, the wetland issue. So a lot of these, a lot of my comments have already been addressed through John's presentation. Just, and just for moving forward, if there are any waivers that are requested, we do need a narrative for each one, so in addition to what you have.
Okay, I'm gonna open it up to public comment and questions. Per the planning board rules, there's a time limit for each person of five minutes. And please keep your comments to the point and precise. So anybody like to speak? Question, sure? Please come up to the lectern.
You don't have to take five.
No, I'm sure, thank you so much. My name is Peter DeJardine, two seven zero Cornell Road. And one of the things that I'm noticing is that the level of engineering required by the density of this proposal is pretty substantial. I appreciate the detail that you're able to explain. The detention basins or drainage, the drainage, I guess, basins, those will need to stand up to substantial rainfall. This past summer, we saw very damaging rains come through the area that I had never seen before. The issue of long-term maintenance, I think, is really concerning to me. And I'm wondering how we, how, how we can expect to see these maintained in the future as, you know, as the homeowners association takes, takes control of the space. So I'd like to, I'd like to make sure that that's addressed sufficiently, the long-term maintenance plan for the drainage basins. Both in funding and also responsibility. That's all.
Okay, so to answer that question, there would be a required homeowners association with the subdivision approval. And all the lots in the subdivision would be required to belong to it in perpetuity. And they would be responsible for maintaining and fixing those drainage structures when and if need be, as well as the road. They would own the road in common and they would need to maintain it and plow it as well as maintain the utility and easement, and the stone water easements.
Thank you so much.
Anybody else?
Hi, I'm Sarah DeJardine Rigoli at two seven zero Cornell Road. I share a house with my brother Peter. I just wanna reiterate our concern regarding the site distance on Cornell Road, which was just mentioned. Being in, in that area, it's, it's very restricted. Our house actually has a bit of a blind driveway going into the curve. So the site distance is restricted by both the curvature and the grade of the road. The current access to the Herb Hatfield Conservation Area is the Angeline Lane is roughly eighty-five feet south of the proposed road to the corn ridge estates. And the driveway to the current house at two sixty-five is about a hundred feet north and we're just a little bit further north there. So we just wanna reiterate our concern on that point there. Thanks.
So could you point out where the Herb Hatfield driveway is?
It's kind of off the map, it's down here.
Right, and on, on this side of that is the Distardance House?
I think you were mentioning this driveway to this house here, which is.
No.
Or there's a driveway here for that house and then the Herb Hatfield is kind of.
In between, right.
Where is that? Is that above two seven?
It's down, you're down with here, I mean, it's off, it's down here. That's all that. I don't know if you have, do you have any such as map, Michael?
So two seven zero, and the access is here.
Right.
Right, that's where our house is there. So this is a, a curvature with a grade and it's very difficult. It's very narrow, as you mentioned. So it's actually quite a dangerous driveway as it is for us. And adding additional traffic and ingress of houses is not something that we feel adds to the safety of the area. We feel it takes away.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The, hope to be limited to thirty-five miles an hour on Cornell Road, it's two hundred foot sight distance. And because this is on the ridge, you have that sight distance. The concern, I, I assume, favor a concern because this is, this goes up gradient here, so it's kind of a little blind coming down this low area. Where this road's coming out on top of, basically at, almost at the top of the ridge, we can see fairly in each direction fairly easily. And the Herb Hatfield is just to the south there. I don't know how much traffic that generates, but there's a parking lot there.
Anybody else?
So my name is Clem DeJardine, Clement DeJardine. I live at two forty-seven Cornell Road, which is adjacent to the land trust property that's been mentioned. I don't think anybody, any of the neighbors here are really happy about this, but that's not why we're here. We just wanna make sure that the rules are enforced, the rules for subdivision are enforced equally and fairly. And that also we wanna protect our property from damage that could result. So in that regard, we've mentioned that there hasn't been a wetland delineation. We've mentioned that the title sheet and sheet four have inaccuracies in the location of the property line. We've mentioned that the hammerhead is not designed to standard. And we've mentioned that the road is not designed to standard. We've mentioned that there are many concerns with the drainage system. In particular, I'd like to point out that retention ponds one and two, retention areas, both drain out without any way, water just goes into the bottom of these and there's a pipe that comes under the road fifteen feet from the property line and that's it. And so water just runs out, water just runs out. Fifteen feet from my sister's property. I don't know if that's right, it doesn't seem right, but you know what the rules are. Specifically though, if you look at the profile of the road, about four hundred and fifty feet of this proposed road drain into retention pond number two. He mentioned that some of the water can go this way, but if you look at the contours and whatnot, you will see that most of the water off of that road is gonna go into retention pond number two. And I just don't think it's big enough. No way. One of the things that hasn't been mentioned, if you look carefully on the plan, you will see that if you go to the, the plan that shows the drainage easement, I forget which number it is, but you, you will see that the existing septic system for two sixty-five Cornell Road has the leach pit, and that's what it is, it's not a gallery, it's a leach pit located within the drainage easement. I don't think it makes sense to have a leach pit in the drainage easement because if there's drainage water coming through that area and then it's mixing with, you know, septic water and then draining onto somebody's property next door, it doesn't seem right. So I think that has to be addressed. It's not shown on this plan if you wanna go and want to, I believe it's gonna be on the plan that shows the drainage and, and.
It's shown, it's shown on that plan.
Yeah, it's shown right here. Here, here is a septic pit.
Yeah, it's shown on both plans as well.
And. And, last issue, or quite important issue, right here at the change in the direction of the property line, the property line goes through the middle of a red oak tree, it's about fifty inches in diameter at the base, that splits into two leaders. So, the tree is owned by both property owners, the Giblins and my sister Louise and her husband Jacques. As such, the Giblins or whoever owns this property would have the right to trim the tree and cut the roots even, as long as it doesn't harm the tree. But we are very concerned about harm to this tree, and, and people often think that if you merely do not go up to the tree with a backhoe and whack it and knock the bark off, you haven't hurt the tree, but you're only seeing half of the tree, the other half of the tree is in the ground. So, any stockpiling of materials, any trenching, any excavating, any driving over it can damage the root system. So, what we would like to ask is, in addition to these other requirements, that there be a tree protection plan put into place, so that that tree remains healthy. And, and we realize that there's gonna be some work there. But the other thing is that the, the current drainage plan so, shows change of grade immediately at the base of the tree. The tree is not located on the plan, and I think it should be. And, final question, or maybe more of a comment, you have a space back here that's four hundred feet wide and about two hundred feet deep, in which you're gonna put three houses. And I, I, I realize that the house, that each of these lots has the required frontage, and maybe it even has the square footage, but in terms of where the houses are gonna go, they're gonna be right on top of each other. So, it doesn't look like a very, it, it doesn't look like a nice addition to the neighborhood at, at that density. And that's it. Thank you.
What kind of trees?
It's a red oak.
Red oak.
It's a rubric, yeah.
And, on this map, on this plan, you say it's down in the corner where it changes It's right there at the apex?
Yeah.
So, would the tree canopy reach over the proposed roadway?
The tree canopy is sixty, roughly sixty-two feet. It's not very tall, it's about fifty-five feet tall with about a sixty-foot spread, because it has two leaders that come out, but at about two feet above the ground, it splits into two. And because those leaders go off on slight angles, it's resulted in a tree that's got a lot of spread. So, the, the proposed trench over here for utilities would be right about at the drip line.
Good. Thank you.
Good evening. Thanks for the opportunity. First, my name is Emily Powers, two seventy-three Cornell Road, so adjacent to the, the main house of this proposed subdivision. I think this map is not up to date, because my little new house is right north, slightly north of the little cemetery on this side. I have a little guest house that will be ecologically friendly, it's completely electric, zero emissions, and it's right here. It'll be housing for two people on part-time basis. So, it's right, right here, very close to this wall. So, this, this map is not, I mean, I guess you have the structure here, this is the main house of this property, and then we have a main house here, and then another guest house right here, right, very, very close to the, the stone wall.
So, how far from the stone wall are you?
A few feet, very, very close. This is where our, this is our back porch, right here.
So, if it's a few feet, is it violating the setbacks?
No, not at all. We've been through, we were here on March twenty-ninth, and we've been through all of the approval, the whole approval process through, it took us a whole year to go through the entire process with our builder. So, it's an all-electric house, no, zero emissions. I've been a resident of, of this neighborhood since nineteen seventy-seven, so this is my home. I'm returning after about thirty years in Italy with my husband. So, yes, I, I, I agree with all the comments raised so far. This is a very, very special neighborhood. This land where the lots are proposed is a sliver of land that is right, is wedged in between a land trust area, precious land trust area that we all cherish. And this is a very special neighborhood. I've had the good fortune to, over the last few years, when we were, before we started to build the house, we rented for a year on River Road, three years on Pettie Lane, and a year on the Point, so that I've sort of sampled all the most beautiful neighborhoods in Westport. But my heart belongs to Cornell Road. This area is very special, and it's one of the reasons, one of the things that people ask me, well, why in the world should come back here from Italy? Well, this is why. This is a very special place. I don't think that we, I don't know, and I, I look forward to seeing the plans, I would hope that the architects who designed the homes will take into account that this is a very special, charming, aesthetic place. And that the houses, my little house is sort of ensconced in nature, it's like a little, sort of, I guess, a little cabin you could say. It would be really nice, I mean, I look forward to seeing the architects' plans, I hope that the architects take into account the very, very high aesthetic value of this, of this property. It is heritage, natural heritage of our town. And another thing that I, I should mention is that, you know, it's, this, this park that Herb Hatfield has left is, is really wonderful, it's a wonderful public area that people really enjoy using. And the most beautiful section of Herb, the Herb Hatfield land is actually this, the, sort of, the initials, this is the parking lot, this would be, no, this would be done here, but this would be right about here, yes. But the very, the most spectacular section of the Herb Hatfield Land Trust is actually the initial walkway from the parking, little parking lot behind those fields before you reach the woods. That is our natural heritage, and for as long as we've lived on Cornell Road, since nineteen, since me, since nineteen seventy-seven, I was in second grade, actually, I was in this classroom in nineteen seventy-seven. Since then, we've all really cherished and enjoyed this lovely natural heritage that we have surrounding our homes. And we do hope that you will take into account this very, very important, precious heritage that we should all try, do our best to protect. And in terms of property values, I think that the next, that the, the proponent's home is a beautiful, late nineteenth-century classic farmhouse set on six acres. In terms of property value, I think that that, that particular house would lose value with a, with a subdivision that is not done with aesthetics and charm and space in mind. So, that's just my two bets. I'm not as technical as the other people who've made their comments, but it's a little bit more personal, going back into the past, about really what we cherish about our neighborhood and coming home after thirty years in Italy to my childhood home. Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
I'm Deborah Drinker, I live at two four eight Cornell Road, I live across the street from Clement Linda's house. And I have noticed since we moved there, we moved back, I grew up there in the house, that the traffic coming out of the Herb Hatfield Conservation Area is all day long, there's a lot of it, and if you add on another area where a bunch of cars are coming out, it's right at the top of the hill, it's, I think it's an accident waiting to happen. They come screaming over that hill, there's no, they may be thirty-five, but they're not going thirty-five, it's like a speedway on Cornell Road, coming up the hill and over it, so that's one of my concerns besides everything else everyone said. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so, I think we need to, before we continue this to another date, go over the waivers that you're requesting. I don't know if you're prepared to discuss the reasons for them, we have a piece of paper here that you submitted, but before I go into that, we have also two letters from, we have one from Louise Distardine and Jacques Brunswick, that are gonna be entered into the record, and one from Lorraine Tripp and Justin Tripp on Cornell, two seventy-seven Cornell Road. And those are going into the record. Do you wish me to read these, or not?
So, the, the Tripp letter, when she dropped that off, she did request that it would be written to the record, and I can do a few of them, too.
Having lived in this town since nineteen sixty-seven, I have come to appreciate all the superb qualities that Westport offers its residents. My son, Justin P. Tripp, purchased two seventy-seven Cornell Road ten years ago. I have resided here ever since. The definitive subdivision Cory Ridge Estates proposed has raised many concerns in respect to my son's abutting residence at two seventy-seven Cornell Road. My first concern is that the three new septic systems and the impact they will have on my well located at two seventy-seven Cornell Road, as it is situated on a much lower level of land than the three lot subdivision being proposed for two sixty-five Cornell Road. It has also been brought to my attention that the town requires a twenty-foot minimum road width, and the applicant is proposing only a sixteen-foot wide road. In addition, we have not, as of yet, seen a wetlands analysis of the proposed subdivision, and how it would affect both my son's property, also, and also the pond located two hundred fifty feet away. The turtles lay their eggs in my backyard every year. Another concern is the proposed subdivision will devalue my son's residence as well as the surrounding neighbors because of the noise and traffic increase that will affect and displace the wildlife that is so prominent in this part of town, as most of us value and try to preserve as much of it as we can.
I think that you should read this one, too, while you're at it.
This is a letter from Louise DeJardine and Jacques Brunswick. We have reviewed the proposed plan for the subdivision of the property at two sixty-five Cornell Road. We own the property immediately adjacent to the south of Mr. Giblin's property. We're unable to attend the meeting tonight, but our family members Clement DeJardine and Linda Nanny will attend and can speak on our behalf. We have several concerns and questions regarding the proposed plan. One, the three proposed drainage basins include pipes and culverts that drain directly onto our property downhill from the proposed road. Will the washout from the road drain onto our property? Two, who will maintain the proposed drainage basins in the future? Are the proposed drainage basins adequate for our new climate conditions? Three, a significant red oak tree bisects the property line, causing concern that the tree will be affected by the construction and use of the road. The plan calls for the center of the utility trench to be thirty feet from the center of the tree. The tree has a basal diameter of roughly four and a half feet with two large trunks of twenty-three inch and twenty-four point five inches that begin about two feet above grade. Will the planning board require a professionally certified tree protection zone beginning at the drip line of the tree as part of your approval, so that no excavation, grade change, stockpiling of materials, or compaction of soil within the protection zone damage the tree? Four, the fifty-foot right-of-way for the proposed road is on our property line for roughly eight hundred seventy-five feet. The sixteen-foot proposed road just meets the minimum, twenty feet from our property line. As proposed, the road devalues our property for most of its length. Five, site distance on Cornell Road is restricted by the grade and curvature of the road. Angelina Lane, the access to the popular Herb Hatfield Conservation Area, is roughly eighty-five feet south of the proposed road. The driveway for two sixty-five Cornell Road is roughly one hundred feet north of the proposed road. Six, the plans as presented are not consistent. The drainage, the grading and drainage plan, for instance, shows the property line gearing away from the existing stone wall, which is the property line the plan labeled existing conditions appears correct.
So, let's go over the waivers that are requested. Now, are these the only waivers you're requesting?
Well, the ones that I knew, that I believed that I was requesting, but as the town planner said, the, we had shown other things that didn't meet the requirements, like the twenty-five foot radii at the street. We changed that to twenty-five, I wouldn't ask for a waiver for that, so these are the ones that I, that I believed to be all we were asking for, and that we continue to ask Do you want to? The first one is Section A, five B one waiver from right-of-way clearing. I stated the post-driveway width does not require the entire area within the layout to be cleared, while the areas are already essentially cleared. There's a row of evergreen screening trees along the property line that we'd like to keep in place, shoulders, the shoulders are already open and devoid of vegetation that will give that same type of clearance that that, that section, or the intent of that section is trying to provide. Section A, B, B, five waiver from standard cross-section, that's been the one that's discussed most of, going from twenty to sixteen. It's, it's always a discussion, you know, you, you read the, the engineer manuals, Ashdale eighteen feet, other manuals, sixteen feet, five apartment, twenty. We try to strike the balance between what is functional for everyone and without overdoing the infrastructure. It just increases the, the amount of runoff pollution potential, and then also, it's not the primary goal, but long-term maintenance for people to have to maintain something like that, and then the character of the neighborhood, and I know everyone's concerned with that, and I've known this for thirty-something years, it's, everyone's thirty years, it's, everyone says the same thing, when a, when a division, subdivision goes into the neighborhood, they don't want it to take away from the neighborhood. And I find the, the more infrastructure you put in there, the more obvious it is, twenty, twenty-four, twenty-six, some towns have twenty-six foot roads, it's a lot. So, we try to strike the balance, and then, you know, we, we did request that waiver for sixteen. If the board doesn't feel that's enough, you know, we'll certainly, you know, listen to the board. But that was the intent behind that one, anyway, is to strike some kind of balance between the functionality of, of the, of the road waiver proposal and, and the neighborhood itself, too. Section A, V, E three waiver from required paved service, the same type of thing, it's try to reduce potential pollutants, and, you know, there is certainly the, the character of the area, when people see a gravel drive versus a paved drive, it's, it does hit you differently, driving into an acreage like that. We did pave the apron at the street to, to prevent any tracking from gravel to go out onto the street. That's a, a thing that really, and it, and it locks in, it will lock into Cornell and not prevent an, an area of erosion or lips or anything like that, that could be a perennial maintenance problem. Water quality, the town has different water quality standards than the state in this case. DEP doesn't require any stormwater treatment or attenuation, the DEP regulations don't even apply to four lot subdivisions. That doesn't, I know, I realize that doesn't pertain here, but one of the things, you know, when, when the town mentions the DEP regulations, they're talking about paved surfaces, and our only paved surface would be the apron right at Cornell. So, the, the treatment requirements are basically non-existent on a, on a crushstone drive like that. We do attenuate, again, by... We do attenuate, again, by 27 to 30, over 30 percent. We do meet those stormwater requirements there, but, you know, we do get treatment through the vegetated swales, et cetera. But to quantify that, I didn't, I didn't quantify that because of the four-lot subdivision. So that was the, the water quality request. Volume control, the next one is Section A, V, D2 waiver from standard 11 volume control. In order to control volume, you need to infiltrate. And to infiltrate in C and D soils is difficult. You don't, you don't get a lot of infiltration, certainly you almost get no infiltration in the D soil. The water's got to sit there for a long time. We like to drain our basins dry and not keep water hanging around for mosquito as nuisances like that. And we prefer to see them drained dry and not have water sit there and take time to get into the ground. There's also in a, an infrastructure component in that, as well as the size of those basins to, to reduce in a D soil, they, they get significantly larger and then you have water sitting in, in a basin. So we, we try to avoid that hence the, the volume control waiver request.
Okay, thank you. So just to reiterate, some of these waivers you request so you don't destroy the character of the neighborhood. It's not because they're cheaper?
No, it's, I mean, it's, I would say it's a combination thereof, but, I mean, primarily when the owner comes and says, I'm doing three houses and I don't really want to, to put in, he doesn't want it to look like a subdivision street. He wants it to have more of a state feel to it. That's one of the reasons why we would even suggest a, a county with a waiver like that.
And the waiver for the volume control, because you can't infiltrate the water, you want a waiver from that?
It's, it's more difficult to infiltrate. We won't get any infiltration in a D, in a C. It's going to take a lot longer to, to infiltrate in that wa, in, at the bottom of a basin like that.
I think your subdivision is very creative in terms of using every inch of available space to maximize the number of lots. But I, I would say, my own opinion, you've got too much. You don't have the ability to infiltrate any of the stormwater. You want it to run off onto neighbor's property with a waiver. You don't want to have a, have to reduce the volume or the qua, or have water that is treated and you don't want to have water that is anything. You don't want to have water quality. You don't want to have volume control. And you don't want to have, you know, you talk about, you have a non-paved road, but that's, it is not an infiltration answer because a gravel road is about 95% impervious. It's not impervious like the surrounding soils, so.
Yeah, we model it. We model it as 95. In fact, the crushstone surface is not generating the, according to the DEP regs. That's not generating the pollutants that pavement does. And that's DEP regulation. I'm just following those regs regarding generation of pollutants.
Okay.
I mean, the, the peaks, to get back to what you said about infiltration. And we reduced the rates going over there by, again, 30 percent, plus or minus. That's, that's a substantial reduction. The volume, you know, this is the only town that I've, I've ever worked in that has a volume reduction. And I, there's a reason because it's, the infiltration in the soils in most of these towns is C and D. It's just, even you put in infiltration chambers, it's tough to get that water in the ground. I mean, you get the water in and it just blows over into an overflow. I mean, the basin's the size to reduce 30 percent of the peak rate. We will get infiltr, some kind of infiltration as the water's sitting there, but I, I don't try to take credit for that in the calculations. If you want me to, to take credit for it and raise the, raise the outlet structure, I can do that. But, you know, there's going to be water sitting in those basins for a period of time. And that's really what I try to avoid.
Maybe one of the ways to avoid it is not have so much development, so, John?
Yeah, I want to pick up on just what the chairman said and what the neighbors said. And, and that is you are asking for a lot of waivers. And so maybe it's, it's our turn and the neighbor's turn to ask. And we're going to ask for a continuance. That's one of the things we're going to ask because, you know, they're just a requirement for, for some more work, John, as you know, perk tests and other things like that. I mean, I don't know how long it's going to take you to change that north arrow. That's probably three or four weeks of work right there, John. But I think during the time of the continuance, I'm all for some of the things that you're talking about reducing, like the width of the road. And it doesn't bother me that that is both better, I think, for the neighborhood and it costs less because I think the main thing is it's better for the neighborhood. And I hope that a fire chief sees that. But the main thing is it's more drainage, it's less runoff, and it's more in character with the neighborhood. You know, it slows people down. It's just a more natural feeling. But I am, also want you to consider something that the chairman brought up, you know, 45 minutes or so ago. And one of the neighbors also brought up, which is, you suggested that there's a logical place to put these houses, which is at the top of the ridge, which means that these houses are going to be right next to each other. And they're going to be, you know, in the middle of a natural setting, right next to each other, which is kind of a little bit contradictory. I'm all for density. You know, I spent 40 years living in an eighth acre lot in New Bedford. I love density. But, so I want you to consider, as you're reducing a lot of stuff, reducing from three new lots to two lots. And, and I wonder if you reduce that, and I know there's a cost issue. I mean, that's why people develop land is for income. But I wonder if two larger lots with more space, more breathing space, you know, doesn't necessarily reduce the income by a third. It reduces the cost of development significantly. And it may increase the selling price of those two lots significantly. So I think that at the end of how much of a time you need to come back, we may be looking at two proposals, one that shows those three lots and one that shows two lots. And you're asking waivers for us and we may be, I don't know, more inclined to grant waivers if there's less intense development of this land that's right near this incredible, beautiful, protected land right next door. So I know it's extra work, John, but I think, you know, there's some easy things like the north arrow and this, this one's a little harder, but, you know. I know you, John, you're up for it.
Please not.
I don't know if the other majesty planning board
Anybody else?
even think that's a good idea, but.
I'm, I'm looking at the design and the waivers that you're asking for. And I, I do agree that most of the stuff that you're asking for is going to help preserve what the neighborhood is. And some of the, as far as the drainage, I mean, you, you, you did state you have a 30 percent reduction already. I mean, it might be a little insignificant not giving you the waivers and leaving puddles in the bottom of the ponds. So I, I think that would probably be a waiver that would be worthwhile. The way I'm looking at it is this developed driveway actually, it's benefiting the runoff and it reduces it by 30 percent. I don't, I don't think it's really significant. So I, I mean, I guess we could look at, if you, if you didn't ask for waivers, what the changes would be. Because I, I don't think it's going to be a big cost change to do that, but, and, you know, I agree with the, because again, I've been working on the subdivision patrol for my whole life and you get some of these towns that got a 50-foot layout on a 26-foot wide straight road that's a race strip to the back. You probably could do that with this and spend a lot more money on infrastructure. And kind, I know the residents said they just wanted us to follow the rules, but I think if we bend in the rules a little bit, it might add to the character. It's just kind of my opinion.
No, I haven't had a chance to look at the drainage, but I will look at the drainage. Okay. So we'd like to continue this to a date certain?
So there are two dates, January 9th to January 23rd? How much time do you need? I mean, perk tests and stuff like that are.
Those arrows are pretty cumbersome.
Well, yeah.
The, the perk, I mean, the perks, where did you say the next meeting was?
January 9th to 23rd?
Can you even do perks out there at this point?
Yeah.
Depending on the weather. If the weather depends, then, you know, if it's been raining, it shouldn't rain that much next month if it wasn't.
What do you guys want, the 9th or the 23rd?
It was kind of 23rd, right?
Yeah.
23rd?
About 23rd should be just.
23rd? You want a motion, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
I move to continue the public hearing of Cory Ridge Estates to January 23rd, 2024 at 6:15.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks.
Thank you. Next up is the 6:30 public hearing for Mellow's Way, file number 23-028 SPA-LID minor, plat 21, lot 8A, continued from October 3rd, 2023. We will have five-minute talking, if anybody in the audience wishes to speak.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Bill Smith, Institute of Engineering Concepts. As this is a continuation of the hearing, unless you ask, unless you refer, I won't delay of going through the, the background and the site description. When we, when we last met, there were a couple of comments that were, were asked for. One of them was to install some gates on the property. We talked with the owner of the property, Catherine Carlos, and she's, she's opposed to having any, any gates put out. One thing I will note though is that the, the developer, Richard LeBlanc, had, we had broken through the stone wall in that northeast corner over here. That has been replaced. There was a construction entrance with stone. That's all been removed. And then that's, that's area has actually re-vegetated or is it, it being re-vegetated? So there was concern about access for motorbikes and things like that. Unfortunately, we have a gas easement that bisects the property and it's, it's impossible to keep the motorcycles and off-road vehicles off of the property. I was out to the site last week. The site has re-vegetated and there's very little areas where there isn't good ground cover. Couple areas where there were some old paths through the site. Those, those continue to be, to be barren, but it's, it's a very small portion of the site. I went out after a rain. There were a couple of small puddles, but there was no, no significant standing water on Mellow's Way. There was a small, small portion right in here. And I think there was a couple of little depressions on the site that, that had a few inches of water in them. I'm not sure if any of the board members had an opportunity to go to the site. I did speak with Michael and I don't, I'm not sure I invited him and any of the board members that wanted to do a site visit that I would gladly do a walkabout, if that's the right word for it, to show what's, what's occurred and that the vegetation is, is returning to the site. There were some brush and seeds and that was taller than I. So, so it is, it is responding. It is renaturalizing. I did talk with Mr. LeBlanc. One of the suggestions was to, to go and put some, sort of naturalized pollinator species on the property. Did a little research into that to see what seeds were available and how best to do that. And most of the literature I saw talked about removing the existing vegetation to plant the, the new seeds, which seems somewhat contrary to what we're trying to accomplish with, with re-establishment of the vegetation that was there. I did further look at the SW Cole report and I can just read a paragraph from that. SW Cole did not note any visual indications that water runoff is a concern with the site in its current state. The summer season has had considerable precipitation, which could have caused considerable runoff. It could be assumed that if water runoff was a problem, that would be notable in the abode, abutting Oak Ridge community due to its proximity to the site and the sloping topography. Provided that the site remains in its current condition with no further disturbances and is allowed to continue to re-vegetate, no additional action may be needed. SW Cole does recommend that the site be secured by some type of forestry gate and locking mechanism. And again, talked with the owner about, about that. And we, our preference is to do not establish any gates. So the, the town's consultant has looked at the site. From his report, I gather that he doesn't feel that there's any, any problem there now. I concur with that and we respectfully ask you to, to close the hearing. Developer has walked away from the project. It's no longer going to be a 39 hot, a 39-unit independent living facility. And the owner, which is Catherine Carlos, is now independent living facility, and the owner, which is Catherine Carlos, is now just trying to clear her name, if you will, before the board. So be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay. Michael, could you give us your, your report?
Sure. So I, I mean, there's not, not really too much to update, I'll just state what, you know, what rights that the planning board has. So in the previous meeting, the planning board had requested buffer strips in term of, composed of strong waddles, and so there are no buffer areas proposed following the last meeting. As Bill had mentioned, there were the plantings that were requested, and they're not going to do any plantings of native plant species.
You're not going to?
Not going to.
Now or not?
Not.
Not going to plant?
And then, I think, I think one of the, the big questions is, does this meet, does this submission meet the entirety of the low-impact development zoning by law standards? And as proposed, it does not. It does not have an existing site hydrology submitted. There are no figures on an estimated seasonal high groundwater runoff coefficients, drainage plan, recharge area analysis, hy- hydrologic and hydraulic design, soils information, landscape plan, so on. I think we all recognize that not all of these criteria are necessary for what's being requested. This is an after-the-fact permit for five acres of clearing. But the fact of the matter is that these are the zoning by law standards, and so in the low-impact development section, there are not provisions where the planning board can provide waivers. So therefore, the appropriate board to request waivers would be through the ZBA. And I think that's, that is a significant question for the board.
So on the LID part, for the LID?
Mister Chairman, if I may, there was two LIDs that were submitted, this, this one for the, the work with no, no follow-on development, and the one for the 39-unit independent living facility. And for the, the 39-unit, we did show existing hydrology, we did have soil test results, we did have the, the other criteria that, that Michael had mentioned. Again, because no development was being proposed here, that, that was not included in, in this package. Certainly make that available and just reprint what was submitted with the, the initial 39-unit project, if, if that eliminates the need for any waivers, so that we can try and put this to bed. If, if not, then, then I would guess we would have to go to the, to the zoning board. My preference would not be to do that, if we can avoid that.
So do you feel that you can meet the requirements of our LID with what you have in the file?
I, I believe we can, yes. Again, it would have to be taken with a grain of salt, because the earlier LID proposed the, the roads and the units and the, the stormwater systems, but that would just, could no longer be proposed.
Mister Chairman?
Yep.
I, I would have to ask that, if, if any of those materials were resubmitted, they would need to be updated. We would not be able to refer to plans from a prior submission for what's before the board right now?
Remind me, what is the owner trying to accomplish here?
The owner is just trying to get out from underneath the, she's been cited by the building department for not having the LID filed prior to the develop, the, the...
What if she want to use the land for?
At this point, nothing, but she is going to sell it. So at some point, somebody's gonna have to come back to you with, with an updated LID for, for whatever's being proposed on the property. There was, there was an issue about Mellow's Way, whether it provided legitimate frontage, and, and I don't think that's, that's been worked out yet, and that's gonna have a big bearing on what, what the property could actually be used for. But it won't be Ri, Ri Development, and I don't believe it will be under Catherine Carlos, but I do believe that the property is still for sale.
And will she be able to sell the property with this hanging over it?
I'd have to defer to my lawyer, the lawyer who's not, not here this evening, so I don't know the answer to that.
Well, I, I think, from listening to the town planner, that the, the planning board would have no choice but to deny this application. So then I think your next step would be go to the zoning board, unless you can update all that information that you've already, and I'm not sure that it's possible.
Well, it could certainly be updated. Again, there's, it would be an expense for the developer, for me to do that. We do have the existing hydrology from, from the site. We do have the soil testing, that's been done, and I guess, I guess that's a question I need to review with, with he and the, the owner of the property, you know, I don't have, it, it can certainly be done.
Well, she cut down all the trades without permission, right? Now she wants to sell the land, so she's gotta pay for all this.
Yeah, the, the developer did, under, you know, he had purchase and sales contract with her, and he jumped the gun, and now, unfortunately, she is, she's holding the bag.
So what is the...
I agree, you know, right on the, on the pure face of it, you know, if you read the regulations, you read what's before us, it doesn't, it doesn't qualify for a special, LID special permit.
Right.
And, you know, having said that, it would be nice to close up this site, stabilize it, then the owner can do whatever she wants with it, but, you know, and I, and I think it's, it's almost less what's going on, on the site. I mean, that relatively easy, you could, you know, seed it, you could get that, you can really boost the recovery that it's under. But when they upgraded Mellow's Lane all the way, and they, and they put that new widened surface in there, that's what I think is really the, the sticking point between, you know, the, I think, the, I think the drainage did naturally flow off the back of the, you know, the Lighthouse Lane properties. The, I, I don't, I saw this site in its natural condition, but I didn't see before the homes were built, but, but clearly the water was tending across the old Mellow's Lane onto this property. So it was sort of flowing down into the, if you look at the property, the lower right-hand corner was sort of flowing down there, and there's a big, the lot next door was, was a big wetland piece.
Right down in here, the rest is quiet down there.
And when you wa, when you walk that, you can see that property is very wet. So, so I, I think, you know, the, the question, there's, there's the restoration question on, on the clearing, I, I think can be solved, whether or not someone takes out a piece of road they did, so that drainage goes back to its natural state. I mean, it's not a ton of work, but that may be the, the answer. But the answer certainly isn't issuing a special permit for this.
So we have gotten some pictures from the neighbor, is that you? So Thomas Loftman, from November 5th, and it shows, I think, I think this is Mellow's Lane?
Yes.
And then this is Mellow's Lane, and this is the access going into the lot?
This is, this is that, that access to the construction road that they put into the lot.
Mm-hmm.
And I think that is as well.
And so...
Are these recent photos?
November 5th. That's...
Those would, wouldn't be November 5th today.
Well, maybe he submitted it on November 5th.
Today's the 14th.
Those pictures, those pictures last year before revegetated?
So taken January, February, March. The, if you go back to the mapping, true, real quick, what the problem was.
Could you come up, so we can get you on the microphone?
Yeah.
And if you could just identify yourself for the record?
Yeah, hi. Good evening, my name is Tom Loftman, I'm at 44 Lighthouse Lane, adjacent to Mellow's Lane. If you look at the property here, I'm here, and the flooding isn't here, and if you look, the grade's going down. So the question is, how can you have flooding here if you took the model? Pictures, the flooding is going out to about here, okay? So how can you have flooding here if it's running down? And the problem is, when they graded the property, they left a, ah, this is higher than Mellow's Lane. That's the problem. When they, they, either they didn't finish or whatever, it could be, this part of the property, there's a piece of the property here that's higher than here, and if you go back to the pictures, I can show you.
Mm-hmm.
And if you look here, this is Mellow's Lane, this is like right at the edge of the lane, it's going out, you see? Going out here, so there's a high spot there, so this is, the out there is higher than here. We're on the map, it's just the reverse.
Thank you. So again, I think we have the question of denying this application, or continuing it if you think you can get the information updated so that we can do it. The only reason I'm considering continuing this is that if we deny it, I think then your only recourse is to go to the zoning board, and I'm not sure what they would do, because this is a condition that you created, it's not something that is...
Natural hardship.
A natural hardship. And so, and then where are we then? You'd have to restart the whole thing again if you want to get this cleared off this, this woman's property. So I'm gonna leave it up to the rest of the board, what they want to do, but if you seriously think you could come back with some, what is required for the LID, and not come back and say, you can't do that, you can't do this, and...
I can certainly meet the checklist of what's, what's required. I just, it's gonna take a little bit of time to do that, to make sure that I've got my I's dotted and T's crossed, so that you can, you can concur that, yes, I've given you the hydrology, yes, I've given you the, the percolation test, yes, I've given you the pre, pre-developed conditions, and then the post-developed conditions, although they won't be significantly different, but they will be slightly different.
Okay. So I, I think our focus is to fix the problem. Our focus is not to be regulatory and say, no, you don't meet it, and go away, because the, the problem's not gonna go away. It, that problem's gonna be fixed, and you've gotta figure out how to do that, and you've gotta come back with the right information on LID. So if you think you can do that, then I would consider a motion to continue. If not, I'd consider a motion to deny.
I, I would prefer, if I have a, if I have a say in the matter, the, the motion to continue, and I have to have a dialogue with my client and the attorney, and knowing what the options are, we can, if we decide that we don't want to proceed with that, we can send a, a letter to the board so that you can deny it. My preference is not, not to have a denial, I'd rather, I'd rather reach some resolution and get this to your satisfaction.
If, if, if you decide to proceed, I would, I would strongly, you know, with, with these photographs, and, and I, when the, when the development was before us, I went out and I have photographs very similar to these photographs, water standing very much like that, and it was last winter when it was before us. So it, it just in, in the pure clearing and rubbing, just that activity, there were piles of stumps and stuff left. And, and what, what's before us is the pre-development conditions, so that the, the plan that you submitted is really the pre-clearing conditions, and, and it may be simply that there is some bunch of stumps, even though the, the trees are gone, that is, even the trees that have fallen were cut up and taken away, there may be just enough ridge someplace, or a little blockage someplace, to create this problem, and this, this may be, you know, three hours with a small dozer or something, and you, you, then you've got something that you can seed and restore, and we restored the site to its natural drainage way that wasn't putting water in the backyards. So that's, you know, it, it isn't just, you know, don't come back trying to fill in the blanks, come back with a solution.
If you're doing that work, who knows, you might be able to do pollinators, you know, which is what you said you couldn't do before.
Then we could do that, certainly, certainly.
Yeah, they're, they're available, you know, we've, we've had, we've done, my colleague and I, Manny and I have done several inspections of, of solar fountains where they had a hard time getting stuff restored, and they've gone in and did a little micro-grading and get pollinators seeded in there.
Right, major's time to seed it now, get that fixed.
Yep.
Get it in there. I, I, I'm sure it's got a lot of growth, because we had a real good growing season too, and there's a lot of, there's a lot of that natural stuff in the soil, but...
So, Bill, you're an engineer, we pointed out where this problem is, he's pointed out on the map, you see the pictures? You should be able to figure it out.
And it might be something in the Mellow, Mellow, Mellow's Lane, and, and I haven't gone out there like Bob did, but, you know, they did a little bit of upgrading in Mellow's Lane, and it, it might have blocked something off too, so... Lane, and it, it might have blocked something off too, so.
What happened was, it fell down before. And you may have had like a puddle, puddle here, but it didn't accumulate, it just drained out.
Yep.
But you walk to the end, there's a rock. If you blow it up, you can see there's a rock out there, and there's a, it's a higher ground. And the sub, it's coming around this way, the water, instead of going down from the map.
If you do look at the topography, it's extremely flat right through that area.
It is.
And then there are some depressions. We did go back after, and we did take some shots, and, and it's, it's essentially the same topography. There may be some depressions that are holding water that weren't, weren't doing that before. My client has said that he didn't change the grade on Mello's Lane, Mello's Way. Somebody cer, somebody certainly did, and there's certainly a, you know, an effect there that's, that's kind of to back the water up.
Well, they, they had to bring construction material in to be able to drive big trucks on it, so.
But what would be backed up is like down here, is a one man's on this property again. So, what's happened is, when the backup, there has been some backup, but it's been here, not here.
Of water going from right to left?
Yeah, I mean, Chris's conservation talked to me about it at one point, because he was upset because of, since they stopped, they affected the flow.
Into the west.
They handled down, but naturally it'll, probably that part of it will crack inside. But this part here, this is Mello's Lane down here, that's like almost the apex of the, of this side, it's a lots coming up, so all of this is low. So what's happening is, once you get, once the water hits, goes over Mello's Lane, it's sort of running down there left to right.
Was pond in there.
You can see we have a depression here, and that was what, what we had prior to any, any activity. The depression is still there, that does tend to, and there is kind of a bridge that goes, that's, that runs this way, and then it's just down, slight ridge, and then it all runs to the, to the west. Let me, please let me talk to my client and get this down, and hopefully we can get this resolved.
So, just to be clear, your client is the landowner?
I, my client is the developer.
Okay.
He's... He's the, I, I have to coordinate with the landowner for any work that we want to do, since he's no longer in, in that. But he is trying to basically clear the slate, so that he hasn't left her with, with issues.
Okay. All right.
Thank you very much.
No, we, we have to continue, so. I entertain a motion to continue, or when is that, Michael?
Bill, what, what do you think, sounds reasonable to you?
At least in your, your late, later January meeting.
We, I mean, we, we can go later than that, go to February.
I listen to February. Just to give me enough time to, to make sure I've got my I's dotted and T's crossed, and do what we have to do.
Six oh twenty. Four oh six.
February sixth.
February twenty.
Um, twenty?
Twenty.
Do we need a continuance from them?
February twentieth?
We do need a continue.
From the, no, we need to continue the meeting, but do we need a letter from them saying it's okay to continue this?
Request that, could I do that by email?
Yes.
That'd be sufficient.
Want a motion, Mr. Jim?
Yes, please.
I move to continue the public hearing for Flat 21 and Lot 8A, Jabbett Street, Mello's Lane, to February twentieth at six fifteen.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, planners report?
First, we have our, we're considering applying, well, not applying, submitting a, um, expression of interest to the MVP Action Grant Program. First one would be to request, well, both of them would be requesting engineering design funds. One would be to improve cold water trout habitats, and the other one would be for green stormwater infrastructure. The first one would be partnering with Buzzards Bay Coalition on a habitat restoration project for plans for stream crossings at Angeline Brook and Cornell Road, Lyons Brook at Drift Road, and Snell Creek at Drift Road. This is, this is essentially an application that we had submitted for a culver replacement grant that got denied a couple of, a number of months ago. And then the other expression of interest we're considering giving is partnering with the Westport Land Conservation Trust. And there is a failing drainage ditch at Gifford Road near Forge Pond. We received conceptual design assistance from the SNET network, which is underway, so we would use the grant funds to advance the conceptual design to more full design.
And where is this?
Which one? The SNET net, network one? Uh, it's near Forge Pond, s, uh, on Gifford Road. It's south of the, the dairy farm.
Okay.
Then regarding our MVP two point oh grant, SERPED has officially contracted with our equity subconsultant, and their name is Conditioning Leaders. And so our kickoff meeting is scheduled for next week on Monday, and we'll start getting underway on that. Next is our rezoning public meeting. Just wanted to give a recap of that meeting, which was for the Route Six rezoning initiative. It was held on November first. We had a turnout of about twenty people, and our consultant presented the concepts that are, are informing the rezoning initiative, and then he provided an overview where that might apply, how it might look in different parts of Westport. We are looking at sometime after Thanksgiving to schedule a follow-up meeting with Russ. I just made contact with Mark Jim a little after I saw you this afternoon, and he said he's not available next week, so anytime after the twenty seventh. So our, our next meeting is going to, we're going to set up the, the expectations for how we're going to approach this. Well, they're going to start drafting the framework, and then we'll need to talk about actually implementing the framework. So, how, what we face, we'll probably, I think we're leaning towards phasing the rezoning, and starting up by, you know, the most critical piece, which is between Fall River and Route eighty-eight, and then moving down Route Six. But that's up for discussion. For our short-term rental committee, I just want to let you all know that our next meeting is here in the NX on Thursday from one forty-five to three fifteen. The committee's almost at a point of having a complete draft bylaw, so it'll, the, this meeting will be dedicated to reviewing that in its entirety on Thursday.
Oh, is the attendance at the last one?
The short-term rental committee?
Yeah.
I think there were three or four people from the public. And it's, it's more or less been the same three or four folks.
Yeah.
Coming to every meeting.
And primarily, real estate and, and landowners, brokers, those kinds of comments about, about the difficulties and the risks.
And when is this, on Thursday?
One forty-five to three fifteen.
And at the selectment office?
What was that?
Where?
Oh, it'll be in here. Regarding the SERPED priority protection areas and priority development areas, Jim, Ross Moran, myself, and Chris Capone have all met to discuss which areas of town should be represented in SERPED's priority protection areas and development areas. Our recommendation to SERPED for the priority protection areas is more or less just to be the same as what it was proposed in the previous plan, which I think was ten years ago?
More than that.
More than that.
Yeah, one of the first ones was maybe fifteen years ago. Twelve, fourteen, similarly.
And so our development areas that are proposed are, you know, staying the same, more or less. We did remove a couple of neighborhoods that will be outside of the sewer surface area. Didn't make sense if they're not going to be connected to sewer to make them a priority development area. So there are a couple of smaller residential neighborhoods that got removed. But more or less, what's being, what will be represented in the plan is similar to what was in the last iteration of the plan. Next is our budget. I met with the, Jim Hartnett, Town Administrator, to discuss the planning board's budget for next year. I didn't propose any changes, and he didn't make any changes to it. The only change is for annual salary increases.
That's good.
And lastly, we had to put out an RFP for peer reviewing consulting engineer. SW Coal let us know that they will no longer be providing peer review services. They're obviously still providing services for construction site inspections, because you just got a report from them that was dated yesterday. But it's only for projects that they have reviewed prior to the end of October. So we have to find a new consulting engineer in addition to field engineering. We're still using field engineering, but if they're unavailable for some reason, or they have a conflict of interest, we'll need a backup. So we issued an RFP last week, and those RFPs will be due December fifteenth. I also talked to Derek, and he said, Derek Mello from SW Coal, and he said that they're going to reassess their capacity to do these type surveys after Thanksgiving, so maybe at the turn of the year, there's potential for them to resume peer review services. So, we'll see, see what they say. They, they had a person who normally reviews the, does our peer reviews retire, and so that's the reason.
Derek?
No.
Roger.
Yeah, Roger Plesso.
Okay.
That's it.
Okay, I, I want to revisit the discussion about the Route Six rezoning, just to give the members a little flavor of what we've been doing. And I think we're talking about forming five sub-areas. And the first sub-area would be from eighty-eight to Fall River along Route Six, basically in the same, um, commercial area that's already there, but to put an overlay district on it. Secondly, would be the science and technology overlay district, which overlaps the commercial district a little bit along Route Six. And to make an overlay district on top of what we have, don't take the underlying district away, and don't take the science and technology overlay district, but superimpose upon it a, another district that would be, um, a, a mixed use, but denser housing possibilities to... Take advantage of water and sewer ability, and give us some place for more affordable housing. And also, really, in the future, if we become a adjacent small-town community, a place for the three hundred and fifty housing units that we could zone. The third one would be the center part of Route Six, halfway between Fall River and Dartmouth, that is already a mixed-use area, and make that, overlay that with a different density and different requirements for, for businesses along the Route Six corridor to infill and to create neighborhood, um, scale, um, commercial development. The third one, fourth one, would be the section from the middle there to Dartmouth along the commercial corridor, um, up to Forge Road, and then from Forge Road to Dartmouth, just on the north side of Route Six. And then the fifth section would be the triangle between one seventy-seven, Route Six, and Forge Road, or almost Forge Road, all the way down to one seventy-seven. That would be a village kind of zoning. And, um, all of these things would be overlay districts on top of what's there. And the, it's really the fifth thing was to rezone completely the, um, what do they call it? The, the zone that's north of Route Six, where you can do anything. And, and create a separate residential zone up there. And not making an overlay, just make it a change. Because if we get, if we get water and sewer down there, we don't want something going in there where it's all residential.
Is, is that like the railroad park section up there, is that all of that?
It would be east of Davis Road. North of the commercial district, along that section to the east on Route Six.
Sorry, I wasn't fast enough to pull the file up while you were going over that, but here's the area that Jim's talking about.
And there's some empty spaces up there. It doesn't have really direct access from Route Six or direct frontage anywhere. It abuts one ninety-five. And with the properties on the east side of Davis Road, there are ways to get in those things, and there's quite a bit of wetlands in there too, but I just don't see how keeping that as unrestricted is gonna be a, a winning proposition. And we had one of the homeowners that lives in that area, down, up, down behind Cumberland Farms, and she was really in favor of, of doing that. The, good to hear that we're thinking about some way to protect that area. And...
Do you want to go through these maps?
Yeah, well, I don't know if they want to, but, I mean, it's...
You're interested.
So the orange is, is basically the science and technology overlay district, brought all the way up to Route Six. And in the bigger part in the bottom, there's probably two or three hundred acres in there that isn't developed, mostly owned by Warren Messier. And, um, so I, I think it kind of makes sense what we're doing, and we're not thinking about making it the fifteen units per acre that may be required in the future when we become a, an adjacent small town, but maybe something in the seven or eight units per acre, if we get, that could take advantage of the water and sewer. But that's still, still to be determined. And also leave it so that you could have industrial, non-industrial... And also leave it so that you could have, uh, industrial, not industrial, but commercial development on the 10-acre lots that are approved for the stod. And then the question is if we could ever get access off of 88 and go directly in there. And there may be some things that might give us some leverage to get that done. So that would be, I think, very helpful and might increase our tax base. So seeing all those things that we're doing, I just don't think that there's time between now and January to get all the details for every one of those things done. So I think what Michael is talking about is doing the section east, west of 88 and maybe the stod as well would be the first step. And it would coincide, hopefully, if we ever get approval for water and sewer for us then. Yep.
Right, I, I think it's a pretty tall order to get five new zoning districts together that has, you know, multi-unit development and commercial development and, and in some fashion, and all of them in time for, you know, probably by December, by January. But two,
And to get the public's, to, yeah. Buy into this. If you did, if you did both sides of Route 6, those two, yeah.
And those are
That's a package.
Right.
No, just get them, could be the last items on the warrant. So it comes in at the end of the meeting, then it
Well, there always are.
Yeah, they'll get passed because everyone will be tired at the end of the meeting. And then that's the way to get passed, is to always be at the end of the warrant.
They always have that.
I know, you're smart, Jim, you're smart.
So, anyway, so just wanted to update everybody what's going on. Thank you. Uh, zoning board of appeals notices, there are two, I think, accessory apartment notices there. Uh, and then approval of the minutes of October 3rd.
I've read the minutes of October 3rd and October 17th. And find them, uh, complete and accurate. I move adoption of the planning board minutes of October 3rd and October 17th.
I've read them as well and I second that motion. Okay, but I'm going to take a vote on them individually. So, uh, so October 3rd, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. October 17th, all those in favor?
Aye.
And I abstain because I wasn't there.
But you didn't find any yours.
No, I didn't, well, of course.
That's very unusual on your note here, Jim.
So, um, the last things, where'd they go?
Invoices.
Uh, invoices, East Bay Media Route 6 rezoning ad, $115.
I move that we pay East Bay Media $115 for Route 6 rezoning ad.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then topics not reasonably anticipated?
Hearing none.
Hearing none.
Well, I actually have one update.
Oh.
You all have noticed Amy is here on the iPad.
Yes.
And she will be joining us virtually, working from home, starting next week on Monday.
Good. Good. Super, it's good to see your face. There she is.
And, and you look like you're home and not in a hospital bed.
Okay, well, we'll look forward to that. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.